Call the Regional City Commission of April 10 to 2018 to order. May re-stand for the political reasons.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amy, would you call the wall, please?
Commissioner Chrisieck?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Here.
Commissioner Wall?
Here.
Here. All here. First item on the agenda is public discussion items not on the agenda. Does anybody have anything to bring forward? Okay, she's got visuals.
I've got stuff.
Stuff.
Yeah, Tad Zachary was my mentor.
You just won't come in if you keep asking.
Jody McGuire, Six Woodside, happy spring for everyone. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to remind everyone, fifth year going into our fifth year. So, keep us in mind for donations, 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 and then come and spend your nickels and dollars and dimes with us. We're, for those that maybe aren't familiar, we're a branch of the Pleasant Ridge Foundation, totally volunteer run, and we operate on 100% donations and 100% of our proceeds go back into the city and spent for community enhancement and services through the foundation, and we keep making the city as great as it can be. So, we're proud to be an arm of that. We are located at 92 Amherst, and for those that aren't familiar, it's the very end of Amherst. We have ample parking by the tennis courts, and there's usually some street parking involved too, but we take donations every day that we have a sale. So, look for these signs, they're posted throughout the city on sale days, and it's just a visual reminder to come on by and say hello. And then, we're gonna try to mix it up a little bit this year. Our first sale will be a Friday evening from six.
Ooh.
I know. We are bold.
That is.
From six to eight PM, Friday, April 20th. Yep. And kinda hit us, and then you can go out and do the real Friday night stuff.
What time again was it?
From, excuse me, six to eight PM, Friday, April 20th. And then, our typical kickoff date will be Saturday, April 25th, from nine AM to one PM. And this year again, we are doing a special fundraiser event for the first full-day sale, and we do a sale collaboratively with the Ferndale Fine Arts Boosters through the school system, and we give 50% of the proceeds to the fine art boosters. So, as the community so generously gives to us, we like to give back, and it's just a nice way to see people from in and outside of the community and to get our season kicked off. All the dates are in the ridger. If you can remember, we are always the second Saturday every month from April through October. Sometimes we get a November sale-in depending on the temps, because it can get a little chilly. So, come on down, please, continue to donate to us, we'll give you a tax form, so hopefully those still, you know, help on your donation. And we have great.
Yes, will you be there open on the garage sale day?
We will be, we're always around on the garage sale day. Yep, yep. So, if you can get one more place, yeah, on your schedule, come on down, and it's just a feel-good thing. We like to talk to everybody and see everybody. So, thank you, thank you, happy spring.
Thank you.
Happy fifth year for Richmond.
Hi. Cheryl Ramos, 59 Kensington. I had a question about the dog park. So, last year-ish, the new dog park was redesigned, it looks great, love the small little dog park, we have a new puppy.
Aww.
And the new entrance is still not available. Power's been put in, it's been in for a long time, it's all chained up. We have had a couple of experiences that have not been so good, trying to take the puppy through the large dog park with very large dogs jumping on her, she's screeching and running away and trying to get on us and, you know, save me type of thing. Not been hurt. We do know of instances where other small dogs have been hurt. Somebody on Sylvan's dog was attacked by a bigger dog, $150 later it emerged in the vet. Same situation, another small dog would have loved to have gone through the regular entrance where it's blocked off and can't get through to the big area. You know, big dogs think they're squirrels, so. So, and no one was, the owners were responsive, which was good, but I would just like to know when that is gonna be opened. It would also assist with parking issues, which the police are my best friends because of that. People still park in our driveway, they block our garage, we've had guests who tried to back out, almost ran into somebody, and these are residents that are doing it. So, it would assist with parking on our street as well since several residents don't have driveways, so, in front or in back. That's it.
So, as soon as the weather breaks here, then the pass card system is gonna be installed out in that gate, I'm waiting for it to just so it's not, so it hasn't been so cold, it's a couple day install to do. So, we're basically putting the same type of pass system over there that you use for the wellness center right now, so you'll be able to use that same tag actually, that will be able to get you into there and to the dog park, so.
What would differentiate between somebody who's paid the fee and?
We'll know that in the office here, that's pretty robust, we can pick which gate opens up and whatnot, so.
Cool. Will both gates still be available or just the new?
Right, at first, the new one will be available and the old one will be available if you have that, if you have the old card, we're not gonna like collect that card from you, we're gonna give you a new one until I can get the wire down there, it's all, everything's wired, so I just gotta get it wired from that gate to the other one to just be able to hook it up so they'll both work. It's just a matter of some logistics on the install side, so.
So, eventually both will operate with the fob?
Both will operate with the fob, yeah, it's a matter of how we're gonna do that wire.
So, the new gate will only open with the new fob then?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
So, one would have to come down and swap their key out or?
You'd just, you'd come here and come to the city hall and?
Oh, just get it.
Yeah, you'd just activate, yeah, if you have one for the wellness center, we'll be able to look you up and we'll be able to activate it for the dog park. And that will also allow us to, so it will, it won't be like the same time every year, so if you renew on March 1st, it'll be good for a year, from March 1st to March 1st, or if you renew on November 1st, however, it'll be a year from when you renew it, and then you'll get an automatic email saying, hey, you got one week, it's gonna expire and things like that.
That's cool. That's good. So, now we just have to hope for sunshine.
Yeah, you know what, I thought for sure that this weather was gonna change already, and you know what, I do apologize, it has been a long time coming, we were looking at a couple different systems and we ended up realizing that we can use the same thing that we have over there, the wellness center, be able to reuse those tags and?
That is cool.
Get to that, so, okay.
Great.
Hey.
All right.
Thank you.
So, in the meantime, is that dog really close?
We haven't taken it back.
I wait till nobody's in there. At least you can check on that. Are there any?
Yes, please.
I'm not entirely sure if this is the proper form to bring it up, but I figured.
Come forward with your name and address and then?
Mike Ross, and I live, my wife and I live at 19 Kensington. Some of you may be familiar with the saga of the ducks that we have in our backyard. Mr. Brookman and I have exchanged a few emails about it. Amanda, we haven't met, but we talked on the phone when several of your cases of wine showed up on my front porch.
Amy told me about it!
I didn't even take any of it. So, anyway, to get everyone up to speed on the duck situation, we've had the ducks for six years. Before we got them, to kind of cover my bases, I did send an email to, I don't remember what it was, maybe just a generic like city of Pleasant Ridge, just to make sure that it was within the codes, because I, being a new homeowner, a new resident of the city, I didn't, wasn't sure where to look it up, all that stuff. So, I sent an email, I never got a response, and right or wrong, probably wrong, I took that as a form of permission. So, we've had the ducks.
You just said it's in Pleasant Ridge.
It's in the air, so. So, we've had the ducks for six years, they're lovely, they're very cute, we have two of them, they're really sweet, they cause zero trouble. Fast forward to a few weeks ago, or actually just recent years, realizing that rats have been an issue in the city of Pleasant Ridge all over the place really. I've been doing everything I can, especially in the last few weeks to, I mean, I should've started earlier, yes, but in the last few weeks, I've gotten rid of the hay bales that I would see them sort of running around in, I'd see the, you know, where they, their holes and nests had been. I have gotten a rat-proof duck feeder that the rats cannot get to it, the ducks can, they've figured it out, it took them a while. So, I've done all these things, in the last few weeks, I've seen zero rats, whereas before it was not terribly uncommon for me to look out the window and see a few rats running around. So, I've seen zero rats, but two weeks ago, one of my neighbors did complain, I guess, about the ducks, and I spoke to him about it, and I have a text message from him that says, "We have no problem with the ducks, we love the ducks, we're just concerned about the rats." So, I do understand that it's against the code, I understand the code's not gonna change, because I know that you voted on it or something a year or so ago. So, my request at this point, might call it a plea, these ducks are considered, they would be considered geriatric at this point, the lifespan is eight to 10 years, they are seven and eight years old, there's just two of them, they're girls. We consider them pets, not farm animals. So, really what my request is, getting the rat situation under control, if we would be allowed to just keep these ducks for the remainder of their lives. So, that's where I'm at, is that. I don't know, I don't know how you guys decide these things or anything like that, but.
You look to our left.
One more note that I have to make about them, ducks do not like to be alone, so, on the extremely unlikely situation that they both just keel over at one time, if one of them goes, we'll find a place, you know, we don't have plans to get new ducks, we'll find a place to rehome the other. So, it's probably a matter of, you know, maybe a couple months, maybe a year, maybe two tops, that we'll continue to have these ducks, so.
It'd be like a notebook.
That being the case.
It would be.
Oh!
Would you like me to?
Yes, please.
I do. Mr. Ross, we have exchanged a couple emails, he did send an email to this effect for, you know, can we, basically is there an exception or variance process to the ordinance? This is actually something I need to talk to the city attorney about, it's just one of those situations where, you know, the ordinance is the ordinance and we have to follow it and use the procedures that we have in the ordinance. So, I will check back with Greg about that, we've had a few things to send to him lately, so, this is probably lower on the list of priorities for things to look into, and I know you're living with uncertainty right now, so, we wanna come up with a definitive answer for you soon. So, let me confer to the city attorney about that, about what our options are here, and if there's anything we can kind of grant you to, you know, any kind of reprieve.
Okay.
I mean, you know the, you know obviously the issues, I'm glad you're addressing them because that's a big part of the reason why we chose not to allow for non-domestic pets, basically, the typical ones, so, I'll get back to you soon.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
If I may? Sorry, Mr. Ross.
Mr. Scott.
Do you know where you would send the ducks in the event? I have a few things in mind that I haven't really checked up on yet, but, yeah, well, we're kind of working on it. Okay. When you talk to the city attorney, maybe you could send us some pictures of how cute they are?
Signs.
There you go, we may all just come on over. 19, right? Okay. Are there any other items for public comment? No? All right, let's move on to governmental reports. Gary McGillbray is here.
Thank you, Your Honor. I came for a couple reasons. First of all, I haven't been here in a long time, and I do apologize for that.
We've missed you.
We tend to, I have four cities I have to cover, and they meet on Mondays and Tuesdays, both of them, so, I'm running around. Three things I wanted to bring up, the first one was local road pilot program that we have. This was, this is supposed to be the last, no, next year is the last year of it, I think. We put in a million and a half dollars, and it's a local match, 50/50, for non-county roads. The deadline to have your application in is April 20th, so make sure you get that in as soon as possible. I checked this afternoon, and yours hadn't come in yet, or at least the person I talked to said it hadn't been in.
I'll send a doctor's note for, with the application, we'll be getting it in too. Definitely by the deadline.
Also, I wanted to mention, we started a new program this year, which is for drinking fountains for schools, and we had a good response from the schools, the application for that is also April 20th, but they've extended a little bit. With schools, they don't have to pay anything for the fountains, it's just a matter of, they're responsible for the installation. So, if you can pass it on to Ferndale Schools, their application had not been sent back in yet, or the final process or whatever, so. But it's also available to local municipalities. What it is, is you will be able to buy the drinking fountains at like half the regular price.
Wow.
To install in your city halls or community centers or whatever it might be, and it's the kind of drinking fountains that have the bottle filler on it, which is the new type. And the last thing I wanted to mention is, this coming Saturday, Detroit Zoo is putting on a Green Fest, and we are partnering with them, and so we'll have lots of Oakland County folks over there as well. Parks and Recreation will have three bounce houses, as I understand it. We're also going to have people there from DTE, Consumers Energy, trying to tell folks how they can reduce their energy costs. So, if you get an opportunity, it's regular admittance price to go in, and it's open from 10 to 3 this Saturday.
I think they have free poop to the first 1,000?
Yes, they do.
Oh, that's right! Hey, go early!
Go early, go off.
Any questions? Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening. So, the chief is out of town this week, so I have been sent in his place.
That's good.
He wanted me to advise everybody that it is severe weather awareness week, and just to let everybody know, at 1:00 PM tomorrow, don't freak out when you hear the outdoor warning system, because Homeland Security will be testing those sirens tomorrow at 1:00 PM. Other than that, police department is doing well. Just so that you are advised, in case you didn't know, Officer Reed left us today at 4:00 PM, she is moving on to another jurisdiction for a full-time job, so it would be nice. Other than that, just wanted to remind people, as always, check your Equifax or TransUnion, all the credit bureaus, because we are still getting a ton of ID thefts. One thing I want to mention is, if you see something come in your mail from unemployment benefits from the state of Michigan, do not throw it out. Open it up, because we've been getting a lot of those where people have been opening unemployment benefits in somebody else's name and trying to get the money from that. That will not show up on your credit report, and it will just be a nightmare to try to clear up, and the state of Michigan is less than helpful with us when we try to track down those people, so, just keep that in mind, so.
So, open it up, so when is it that you're, we're receiving, may receive in the mail?
If somebody did open unemployment benefits in your name, you may receive something at your address, so don't think that it's junk mail or something, it may actually be a statement saying, hey, you've applied for this, so that you can try to stop it before that money is sent out and compromise your ID even more.
I heard on the radio that there's a lot of unemployment.
We've had a bunch of them, so.
Wow.
And I'm sure we'll start getting the tax ones in pretty soon as well, from where people have filed them.
Imagine the state doesn't pay people unemployment, they screw those people, and that'd be the last agency I'd try to get money out of.
But that's it, everything else is going well. Officer Hatfield that you met last month has settled in nicely, and our midnight guys are doing great, we haven't had any, well, I take that back, we had one Larsen Eamonnato in an unlocked car earlier, or I believe late last month, but everything else is going well, so.
Yeah, he's got the wave down, stops and says a lot.
Absolutely.
He's doing really well.
Absolutely. Did any of you have any questions? Thank you very much.
Okay. Moving on, city commission liaison reports, start with Commissioner Scott and historical commission.
Yes, just a couple of things to highlight this month. Spring is quickly turning into summer, we're getting close to our home and garden tour, so we wanted to alert everyone to mark your calendars for June 2nd. We've got quite a diverse collection of homes throughout the city to see for this year, so save the date for the tour, it should be a really good event, and the proceeds always benefit things around the community, the historical building that we have, and if you haven't been in there lately, and to check your records, feel free to just step in or stop in and see what we know about your home, what information we might have, and you might even want to just drop something in, like a current photo of your home, so that someone else in the future might benefit from that current information. And also, on August 9th, something else to mark your calendar for is our speaker series event, where we're talking about kit houses. There are a lot of homes in town that were built from kit form at a point in time 100 years ago, when Sears would literally mail you a home, and you could put it together on your property, and quite a few of them around town. So, if you're interested in seeing which home started as kit homes, and to learn a little bit about how kit homes came about, set aside that date, it'll be at 7:00 PM at the community center, August 9th, and I'll mention it again in future meetings, should be a lot of fun.
Cool, that's it. Comments, questions? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Wall, recreation.
Hi, summer program registration begins Monday, it's a great program if you have children. It's probably a great program if you don't, but I think it's more applicable if you have children. Take advantage, you can register online or at Four Ridge, Pleasant Ridge Piranhas, the swim begins Monday too, online at four. Our next recreation meeting is Wednesday, the 25th, at 7:00 PM. Spring Bingo, May 3rd, from 6 to 8, very exciting as well, and citywide garage sale May 12th for $25 a permit. And I'm also gonna give a plug for the foundation, our auction is May 19th, very exciting, eighties! That's all I have.
Very exciting. Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Chrisieck, Ferndale Public Schools.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Metzger. The Ferndale School Board meeting was held on Monday, March 19th, and one of my favorite parts of the meeting, and very enthusiastic description of the different buildings throughout the district. This month's selection was CASA. CASA is an inter-district program where it brings students from local neighboring districts, Ferndale, Berkeley, Claussen, Lamphier, Madison, some other districts collaborate, and they bring their students together for elective classes on science, arts, and they had a really nice presentation on the programs offered for CASA, including classes which highlight the connections between the student body and the community, biology classes, did a field trip to Forgotten Harvest, and volunteered their time to learn about harvesting products or crops for distribution amongst needy populations. There's also a field trip to the Detroit Opera House, this was really incredible. The students at CASA were able to take a master class in contemporary, in contemporary dance, offered by the Paul Taylor Dance Company, and a fabulous collaboration that students in this area were able to participate in through the CASA program. So, again, it's a jewel of the district and it's something that really highlights the collaboration between neighboring districts, and something that was highlighted during the point of pride section of the meeting. Some upcoming, some more news, this was, this is something that is coming up, it's Tuesday, April 24th, at Ferndale High School, 6:30 PM, it's called Screenagers, and this is something that I think needs to run at my house 24 hours a day. It's examination of how technology is impacting our children's development and the challenges that parents face in this digital world. So, there'll be a screening of the movie Screenagers with discussion, and that is happening on April 24th, I'll write that down, Ferndale High School at 6:30. And this is another great program, the Ferndale Upper Elementary Schools Got Talent. I attended this event last year, and, I mean, for a group of middle schoolers to put together a show, it was about a three-hour show last year, and it was just spectacular, these kids, the full range from singing to playing instruments, there was a magic portion of the show, it was just incredible. So, this year's show called Fuels Got Talent will be on Saturday, April 28th, at the Ferndale High School Auditorium at 6:00 PM, and that is really, again, a great, a great evening. And then, music news, two Ferndale Orchestra students were nominated to participate in the Michigan Youth Arts Festival Honors Orchestra. They were selected from among the best student musicians in the state by virtue of their outstanding performances in the state solo and the ensemble festival. Both of these students received first division ratings based on the proficiency scores. Aaron Isaacs and Jacob Keener were both selected to represent Ferndale High School on the viola at the Honors Orchestra. Jacob Keener was also selected as an outstanding soloist and has an opportunity to audition to be able to perform as the featured soloist at the Michigan Youth Arts Gaelic Concert. So, again, another example of the great work that's going on at Ferndale Schools and their music program. The Ferndale MP Robotics Team is preparing for the state competition after great performances at the regional events, including winning the centerline competition. So, that is also a point of pride for the district. And then the last item is the Ferndale Education Foundation Derby Party is coming up, and it'll be held at the Pleasant Ridge Recreation Center for, I think it's the second year in a row now, and the host will be Saban, who will run the derby party and the evening. There'll also be music by a DJ, so promises to be a lot of fun, starts at 6 o'clock, runs till 10:30, there'll be a strolling dinner, beer and wine on the premises, and that is $60 and goes to a wonderful organization. So, that again is on Friday, April 27th, at 6:00 PM at the Pleasant Ridge Recreation Center, and I know we're proud to host that event, so.
It's the second year for Saban, too.
Yeah.
It's a big success last year, so. Any questions, comments? Anything else about strategic planning? I know, I know they've got the big event on the 21st, I guess.
Yes, thank you for reminding me, Mayor. The 21st will be an all-day workshop event for gathering input for the strategic planning process. There were three input sessions, the last one, the third one, was added because of popular requests. This culminating session will bring all the ideas gathered in the input sessions, it'll bring all the stakeholders with the Ferndale School Board, and they'll work on a collaborative vision for the strategic planning for the next five years for the district. So, if you're interested in that, there's information on the Ferndale website, but a great opportunity to help shape the vision, participate in the vision for the district going forward, and I really appreciate the reminder.
Yeah, I think they need you to contact them in advance if you're planning to attend.
I went to the scavenger hunt.
Yes.
In the school, and that was a very cool way to sort of learn a lot of different things about the school district, and I think it was cool.
Yeah, the school board is really excited about innovative ways of interacting with the district and educating the stakeholders. and educating the stakeholders. And yeah, I think they're just looking for all different ways. And the scavenger hunt, I did not attend, but it's, from everybody I heard, it was a lot of fun and very informative.
Yeah, we were lost most of the time. We did not win that event.
That's the best part.
We didn't win the creative part, but that was.
We lost.
Yes.
Anything else? Okay. Commissioner Perry, Planning and DDA.
The Planning Commission DDA did not meet this month. But our next meeting is April 23rd, which is a Monday, and will be here at 7:00 PM. And I have two of the Planning and DDA Commissioners right here. Is there anything I've forgotten to tell them? Tell the crowd. No, we're good?
That's it?
Okay, so hopefully we'll see you April 23rd.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Just, there are four items I just want to mention, so you're all prepared. Clean Water Action is going to be coming door-to-door, starting tomorrow, if they so choose, through May the 31st. So they will have IDs with their name tagged. You can call City Hall. They've already notified the police in a day. So if you have somebody come on your door, make sure that they identify themselves, but it is a Clean Water Action. They have approval to send us. So just so you know. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor? I request that we approve the consent agenda.
Discussion?
Sorry, I have the wrong agenda.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes.
Approved. Next item on the agenda is the 2018 HMA resurfacing project bid alternates. I believe there's been some discussion around this, but Jim, do you have anything you want to say?
I'll say a couple things. With a name like HMA Asphalt Bid Alternates. Doesn't get much better than that, does it? These were included as alternates in the road project bid for this year. The Indiana Ridge and Bermuda reconstruction. These alternates were to do corner bump outs, basically, at the intersections of Oakland, Elm, and Poplar Park at Ridge. Those are 36-foot-wide cross-sections there, which is enough for parking on both sides and two travel lanes in the middle. You may recall, we did a pilot test in the fall. We adjusted the design that went in, the final design that was included in the bids, based on that. We widened it a little bit from what was tested. And it met all the engineering standards. It met all the standard engineering practices for normal streets. So it wasn't going to impede vehicle traffic. It might be a little less comfortable than having 36 feet to, you know, trying to drive wherever you want to right now. The reason for the inclusion in the bid is because one of our priorities is promoting walkability in the city. Walkability is more than just a safety concern. You don't always have to have a demonstrated dangerous safety problem to improve walkability. Shortening the crossing time makes basically walking more comfortable. Would have added a little bit of green in these locations. So this is not a major issue. It wasn't a huge problem we were trying to solve, which is why we included them as alternates in the bid. Something that we could get prices for and then decided if we wanted to do or not. Last month, you decided to postpone to get more public input. I believe that you've gotten that through one forum. We did not do a rigorous public input process on this because, again, it's a choice. We're not solving a demonstrated huge issue. We're looking to make things better where we can, if it makes sense. So I think that you've digested all the input you've received. We don't need to go over that. It was typically vocal, and I think the majority was against, so we know that. Some interesting things, I think, going forward that we'll take out of this is that, you know, we hear it all the time about how people speed on my street. But then we also hear how people tend to react against any changes that might impact how fast people drive on the street. It's a funny topic. So traffic calming is a topic in general. I think it's something that we'll be taking a look at more rigorously. It really is a science. Road design is a science. We know from 100 years of study on this what actions lead to what results. And what road design comes down to, where the choice is, is what are you prioritizing when you're designing a street? So are you designing, are you prioritizing free-flow vehicle travel? Because that's how our streets are designed right now, to accomplish free-flow vehicle travel. We've got two lanes that are unimpeded in every direction on all streets in town. So you've got no, basically, friction or, you know, anything to slow cars down. So we prioritize free-flow vehicle travel above anything else in our street design. And again, that's a choice. But when we talk about traffic calming, what it is, is applying the science and the things we know about how we design our streets and how that impacts how fast cars drive and the impact on the community. So we need to take a look and really quantify what that body of knowledge and research and study is, what our options are when we're looking at design for our streets, and then how we implement all of those various measures. There's a lot of tools in the toolbox that address different parts of traffic calming. You've got volume, you've got speed, and then you've got intersections. And those are three distinct components to traffic in general. And so you have to pick the right tool for the right problem. One of the things we continuously hear is about a stop sign at Oakland Park and Ridge. We've actually had our traffic consultant study that. I got the final report late yesterday about whether or not one of those stop signs is warranted. And with a stop sign, it's important that we all understand and keep in mind that stop signs are intersection control. They are not speed control. And they have no speed control function. Once you get more than 100 feet away on either side of that stop sign, cars are going to travel the same speed they were traveling before. Some studies find they actually travel faster because people try to make up for lost time for the stop that they had to make. So there, through the research and through all of our experience over the last 100 years, the engineers have come up with warrants when a traffic stop, when a stop sign, is warranted and needed. And you have to apply those. When a stop sign is warranted, it's obeyed, and drivers don't ignore it. And it creates a safer condition at that intersection, where you've got crossing movements, pedestrians crossing. So the number of cars, the number of cars that are entering from each leg of the intersection, the number of pedestrians you have, whether cars are more heavily weighted from one road than the other road, if it's a two-way intersection, it can't be a two-way intersection, if it's a three-way intersection or a four-way intersection, all of those things come into consideration. So actually, at Oakland Park and Ridge, a stop sign is not warranted there on Ridge. It's appropriate that they have one on Oakland Park. One of the recommendations was that we put a, that we add a sign underneath the stop sign that says "Cross Traffic Does Not Stop." So that drivers entering on Oakland Park know that the cars across aren't going to stop. But we don't have a demonstrated history of accidents there for vehicles. The crossing across Ridge is actually 10 feet shorter than the crossing across Oakland Park right now. So for pedestrian to get across Ridge, hasn't been an issue. So, you know, we've studied that. To put a stop sign there where it's unwarranted, you create a situation where drivers get frustrated and resentful and tend to blow the stop sign and ignore it. And it creates a more dangerous situation because then you've got the presumption that that driver's going to stop, and they may not. So that's the issue we actually run into on the stop signs on Woodward Heights, for example, where the Indiana Woodward Heights stop sign is probably warranted, but I don't know that the stop sign that's on Woodward Heights at Bermuda is warranted. We've studied speeds. The speed, the distance between the two stop signs on Woodward Heights is 400 feet. So you've got 400 feet to stop, get back up to speed, and then stop again. In that 400 feet, when we put the speed counter out at the exact midpoint between the stop signs on Woodward Heights, the 85th percentile speed was 1 and 1/2 miles slower than it is on Ridge, where there's no stop signs. So cars in that 200 feet from the stop sign to the midpoint have accelerated up to the speed the cars travel on Ridge already. So the stop signs on Woodward Heights really aren't having a speed control measure. We know that Ridge is one of the fastest streets in town. And cars in 200 feet have accelerated up to that speed on Woodward Heights already. So, you know, our cops have to spend time patrolling those stop signs on Woodward Heights because cars are blowing them. So we need to look at those. That might not be the appropriate deployment of those stop signs. So, you know, that's just one specific example of some of the things we've heard. We're going to be putting together, going forward, an overview of all of these different traffic calming measures, all of the things we can do in town when appropriate, what the right tool for the job is, and then how we can approach deploying these as we do projects. On Ridge, we're doing a few things as part of the project automatically. We're putting in a mid-block crossing at Roosevelt School because that's the right tool for that location, where we have a pedestrian crossing that a lot of kids and parents are crossing every day. And that will provide natural traffic calming there. But that's a point solution. You know, that's not going to slow down traffic on all of Ridge. It'll slow it down where we have a lot of pedestrian car interface. So we can look at all those things. We'll have a presentation. And then we'll have to talk about a method by which we can all agree that we'll deploy these in the future and how we go about doing that. So I guess that's my overview with that. You know, it's up to you guys if you want to do these projects, the bump outs, the corner bump outs at Ridge. And I'd be happy to answer any further questions you have. I know there's probably more than, you know, a little more expansive than the specific issue at hand. But again, let me know if there's any other questions.
Before I ask for audience participation, are there any questions from any of us? You got something?
Yeah, I would just like to ask, and this is, I'm glad Sergeant Reed is here because I know it's something that our residents rightfully want updates on and just reassurance on as far as enforcement. We've talked about past locales. Our officers are constantly out there ticketing different locations. Can we speak specifically, either Sergeant Reed or our city manager, about plans for enforcement or adjusted enforcement? Or, you know, not to give the secrets away to all the speeders out there, but just our understanding at City Hall that enforcement is part of this.
Right. Yes. And actually, that's one thing I had on my bullet point list that I skipped over. So I'm going to go back and hit that now. I've spoken with Rob. Chief is on vacation this week, but I've spoken with Rob about this. And enforcement is a, enforcement is aspirin. It's a Band-Aid. It helps with the symptoms. It doesn't address the cause for the speeding problem. And, you know, there is some halo effect they found in studies where you do stepped-up enforcement. It lasts anywhere from a week to three weeks. Sometimes no halo enforcement at all. And then after that, car drivers are just going back to the speed they're at. So what that tells us is you have to constantly do it. And we know that we've got a lot of areas in town where there are traffic issues. We talked about Woodward Heights. We've got the Millington Prohibited Turn. We have, today, we had an interesting call from a non-resident about people running red lights on the service drive. You know, where you've got southbound Woodward and people heading eastbound on the service drive. And we know that's an issue. So we've got that. We've got speeding on Ridge. We've got Oakland Park and Oxford. We've measured a lot of our most notorious, and Sylvan on the other side here, too. We know where the notorious speed places are. We've got our kind of standard street, residential street, that has a very consistent and similar speed profile throughout town because we've measured a lot of them. We know the streets that are issue streets. The, you know, the issue we have is that we have one cop usually on duty who can do traffic enforcement. We usually, we now more often have two cops on duty, but, you know, not doing traffic patrol. We've got a lot of other things the police have to do as well. We're going to spend more time doing patrols on residential streets than we have in the past to try to, you know, increase the visibility of enforcement. Don't speed residents because we will ticket you now. But I don't think that's, it's not going to solve the problem, right? It's not a silver bullet that we can, it's not a magical cure that, you know, we can just put a cop out on every street all the time and stop the speeders. The biggest issue we run into is most people, the 85th percentile speed is below 30 miles an hour on almost all of our streets. It's the five or 10 people a day who do 40 or 45. We can't stop all those people on all the streets. We can't be everywhere at all times. So, you know, enforcement is something we can and will be doing more of. But again, it's not going to solve all the problems. The way you solve the problems is through design, by making people feel like they need to drive 25 rather than feeling like they're comfortable driving at 35 or 40. You know, those kind of egregious speed violations. So, yes. And I don't know, Rob, if you have anything to add to that based on your experience in the field, but that's kind of what we've talked about internally.
City manager's pretty much hit it.
Yeah.
I mean, we do bounce around. I mean, we're on Woodward Heights. We're on, I'm sure you've seen us outside your house.
Every day.
We know where they're at, and it does happen. I mean, Jim and I have talked about it up at Millington. When we hit that hard for a couple of weeks, it'll start to die off. And it's about three weeks later, then all of a sudden it starts to come back. So, I mean, it is a shell game that we're playing, but I mean, our officers are out there. We are on those streets. We are enforcing. We put the radar trailer out there to kind of make people aware of, you know, oh, wait, wow, look.
Do you think that, is there research that that, that's effective?
The permanent radar sign that we put up on Ridge, there is an effect on those. Those do have an effect.
Gets my attention.
The temporary trailers, you know, again, that has a temporary effect.
Okay.
But we are out there. So even though we're stepping up enforcement on certain streets.
Yeah.
Upcoming. I mean, if you talk to the people on Woodward Heights, they see us out there a couple of times a day anyways. I mean, we're always at those stop signs. But, you know, I mean, things are going pretty decent. We are on the high streets as well as on Woodward, so. But we will be stepping up certain areas over the next few weeks, so.
No, I appreciate that entirely. And I know our residents really appreciate you guys being out there. I just wanted Jim and, you know, you being here to just talk about it. When we talk about tools that we have in the toolbox, definitely enforcement is a part of that, you know? So Jim's points about design are substantial. And the reality of the situation, we talked about, you know, what is Ridge Road designed for? I mean, that is the speed, basically, that you're going to get, is what the road is designed for. And those are design issues that we have to address. And I feel in the bid we approved last week, or excuse me, last month, there were items, the striping, the crossing at the elementary school. Those are just items inherently that are going to reduce the speeds. We're hoping we get a reduction in the speeds just by the design that we approved last month. The one thing I appreciate Jim talking about and you talking about is that other tool in the toolbox. I mean, I, we all know that there's areas that are patrolled, not exclusively at Pleasant Ridge, but in our own commutes, in our daily lives, right? There are areas that have a reputation for increased enforcement. In my experience, just anecdotal, is I don't see too many people speeding in those locations. Now, if you go two blocks over, you may get an acceleration and a speed that is not safe. But what I'm saying is, I appreciate the job that the city manager's done. I always appreciate the job the police are doing as far as enforcement. And I just want residents to know that we understand that that's part of how we solve this is with enforcement. So Jim didn't mention his notes, but I know it's something that we've talked about and we're cognizant of. And, you know, we understand.
So you're trying to say thank you. Thank you.
One thing I would like to point out is, a lot of times we'll get calls about certain areas of like, hey, we have speeders on our street. It's not uncommon for me to pull over the caller for doing exactly what the caller has requested. And I actually have had people that were like, well, I didn't mean for me.
Oh, yeah.
So just keep that in mind. You know, a lot of the people that we do stop are residents of the street. You know, a lot of people are under the assumption that it's people passing through. A lot of it isn't. It's your neighbors.
So in the audience, please, step forward.
Good evening. Bob Obringer from 22 Oakland Park. I'm here in my unofficial capacity as the block captain, yeah. And so when the agenda item came around or the issue came up, we sent an email out to the street just to see what everybody thought. And a lot of people were out of town the holiday or the vacation break. But we did receive 15 responses. All of them were very negative about narrowing the street. Apparently Oakland Park was part of the experiment or the test. I don't remember it. Maybe I wasn't in town. But definitely a number of residents were. And at least the 15 people that responded, well, actually, there were 16. Tom Troyer, but I understand he's going to be here to speak for himself, but.
You're on top.
So the 15 people were strongly against it. And this includes people at the west end of the street who have minor children who are at that crosswalk. And they didn't see any benefit to it whatsoever. They thought the problem lied elsewhere and lay elsewhere. And. And one of the residents who grew up here spent a lot of years of her life crossing Oakland Park at Ridge from the north side to the south side, going to Roosevelt and then on to a high school or wherever it was. And she never noticed a problem. And then somebody else apparently who was a mathematics major figured out that the 20% reduction would amount to like two seconds or something like that. And unless there was a history of pedestrian incidents there, which I'm not aware of, our girls went to Roosevelt for seven years, 10 years altogether, and gosh, we never had any problem there. So in any event, the people that have raised their voices are not excited about that. And actually, they thought if there's 50 grand lying around, maybe we could give that to the Oakland Park Association because we could probably do really great things to do with that. So keep that in mind. Thank you very much.
Hit the Sylvan Block Club already.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else want to? I guess Tom Troyer has to.
I almost think it was, I mean, I appreciate you're going online with the thing because I think that was a good idea. I mean, it was a way of getting feedback and that's what you wanted. So you got, you know, you certainly got the feedback. I thought it was sort of ironic when people were talking a fair amount how the city wasn't offering any data or you didn't offer any data on some of this, and then they had all sorts of ideas that they, they thought were a good idea without any data, which was sort of ironic when you're only going to post this long, like you're not going to see through that. I had a question for Jim. The money that we have, I know there was, I guess I'm kind of harkening back to a planning meeting, if it wasn't the last one, it might have been the previous one, where we were kind of batting around ideas. And the money that we're getting from the state on this, is this something that can only be used like on our own streets or sidewalks or our own pathways? Or is this something that could be used on a project that we were sponsoring that might be on like on a county road or a state road?
We, it's Act 51 money, partially, and partially it's infrastructure money. The Act 51 money is separated into major and local streets, and all of our streets are designated as either a major street or a local street. You have to use the money from that fund for that street.
Right.
I don't know that we can, I don't know about Act 51 money on county streets. We don't have any county streets in town, so that's kind of a moot point, but it'd be Woodward. I don't know that we could use Act 51 money on Woodward because that's a state road.
Right.
Now, since we're, the 50,000 and it's 18, 18, 18, it's, you know, three buckets of 18,000 for the bump outs on three streets.
Right.
A lot of this project is coming from our infrastructure millage. That money we could spend on improvements at Woodward. So, you know, local government financing is you've got a lot of silos that have to be spent for only that thing, right?
Got it.
So the money that comes from the infrastructure fund, which is funded by the infrastructure millage we all pay, yeah, we could use that on a non-city street.
Yeah.
The Act 51 major local street funds, I'm not sure. I'd have to look.
And I realize that anything there would have to, would require MDOT approval and, which is not easy or simple or without probably a fair amount of pain. But, I mean, I was thinking where we were kind of brainstorming ideas and talked about eliminating that right turn lane on southbound Woodward to Oakland Park and then just to the south end of that corner where that lane closes off and making that available for pedestrians then to be able to walk out and reduce that walk by 12 feet on either side and especially on the, on that south side. I mean, that would be a really significant difference. And with people with kids in tow, going to the pool and dogs and joggers, I just thought that might be one place where we could look at putting some of that money if, although frankly, I'm not opposed to the notion of calming because after living for 34 or 5 years on Oakland Park, anything that could by design tend to slow down at least some of the traffic on Oakland Park would be, would be pretty swell. I mean, we had, I had one, we had one person rear end us passing another car when we were going into the driveway. So, yeah, yeah, because they thought they could because it was wide enough and they thought they could go that fast. So, I mean, there are reasons why we'd want to do that, especially on the boulevard streets, but, you know, I suppose it was a matter of maybe of timing and maybe being more and had, taking the opportunity to bring people in at the, more in the front end and educate. I think your presentation tonight offered a lot more context for this, which makes, which makes good sense.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I think the bump outs weren't fundamentally changing the function of that corner.
Yeah.
The test we did was narrower than the final design, so the test, I think, created a sense that, you know, it was going to be more of an impactful thing. So, yeah, this, this one, you know, didn't quite raise to the level of importance or change. Yeah, we would have had a more robust process upfront, but we have discussed, you know, and that, that is kind of what we're looking to do is for more impactful traffic calming measures, the street would absolutely be more involved in those.
And to be, to be even more specific, I think the discussion on Facebook was pretty much limited to crossing time.
Yeah.
And we're really talking about something that's a little bit, that is more inclusive. I mean, you talk about traffic calming, you talk about pedestrian safety, to be sure, but you're really talking about something, a larger design issue. And I think that's how it has to be approached and then maybe it's better appreciated. But thank you very much.
You bring up two issues that just, I've tried not to read the entire 200 and some odd responses, but I've read enough of them. Then one thing that came out of this was the discussion of where money, what monies can be spent where?
Yes.
And that monies are allocated to certain buckets and you can't say, I've got 50,000, so I want it to go over here or I want to go at the pool or I want to do this or I want to build another playscape somewhere else. These are buckets that have to stay in certain, I think, that that's something that, you know, I don't know how we inform people, but people need to understand the budget is set up that way. So it's not just general funds that can be spent anywhere. And the other, the other thing is, is the issue of communication. I'm not sure, and we are going to be continuing to discuss this, how to get information, especially on issues like this, which is very complex. You can't put a letter in a water bill and discuss this issue. You can't, that's the same, you can't, you can discuss it in a meeting, you can't have town meetings every, every couple of weeks on something. You can't put it in the ridge or otherwise, we've got to pay for that thing. And you're going to make a book that we're going to put in the mail and send to everybody. So there, there are limitations on what we can, you know, what media we can use to get information out there, but we need to also know, Facebook is not our preferred, you know, throw it out there because of the way, the kinds of responses and the way it just kind of feeds upon itself. And it does allow a lot of people who will not come to a meeting and show their face making comments. They will never come here and say those comments, but they feel very good about putting them on Facebook. So the idea is, is really we need to have more discussions about how do people consume information about the city? And when I hear, I don't have time to go to a meeting, I don't have time to watch a meeting, I don't have time to go to the website to find stuff, give it to me so that I can, you know, spoon feed it to me. You can't do that. So the question is, how do people get their information? How do they want to get their information? Some people may not want to get it at all, but there are limitations. We are talking about designing a new website for the city that will make it easier to get this kind of information hopefully out there, but a lot of people don't go to the, you know, don't have internet. And so that's, that's a bigger discussion that we have to have and we'd like to have more people kind of give us information. How, how do you get information on the city when you're trying to get information? Do, you know, how would you like it presented? We can only, you know, we could sit here for five hours and do presentations and things, but if people aren't watching, if they don't get it on their cable station and they don't watch it on Facebook and they don't watch it live.
Or read it, right.
Or read the documents or go to the, you know, everything is on, you know, is on the city website, all the materials that we have. There's nothing that we have that the residents don't have access to. But I know it's not necessarily easy to do that or find the time, so we are, we are very.
You have to want to.
You do, yeah.
You can't just pick and choose.
Right.
You know, you either want the information or you don't. I think you guys are doing a great job of providing multiple options for people.
Thank you, Cheryl. We'll try.
But there are those out there that don't have access to computers and website. I think of Kathy Gillis. I mean, she does not.
Right, sure.
So, I mean, she's a very important person in the neighborhood, as are many like her. So it, it's important to make sure we take care of those folks as well. I would expect our city commission to.
So we need to know how to do that.
Yeah. And I don't think anyone was requesting a personal spoon fed letter. I think, I don't believe that that was what was requested. So I actually take exception to that statement of being spoon fed because that's not what anyone is looking for.
Right. I mean, but.
It's the proper communication.
But there are certain things that if, you know, the various options are not there. I mean, options of putting something, thinking three months ahead and putting it in a water bill, you know, those kinds of things. I mean, there are, there's a place for that, you know, and certain things can operate that way. The question is, what, you know, if you give them 10 options, you know, is that enough? Or does somebody want an 11th option or a 12th option? That's, that's the question. How do people want their information? If they want it, how do we get it to them and make sure that they get it?
Correct. And I totally agree with that, and I think you guys have done a very good job in the past with big issues that have to come. Sorry, no. Yeah, Loretta Lanko 32. Oakland Park, sorry. I think you've done a very good job in the past in terms of communicating big issues. Every little issue, people maybe don't watch every month or don't come every month, but when there's a big issue and safety, I would think would be a big issue, that should be a town hall and that should be put on signs like you do for other coffee clutches and things like that to say, hey, we're going to be talking about something very important. It's not just for the safety of our, of our children and our elderly and our, all of our folks, but it's also for our experience as a city as well. And I think this was just, just a very shocking thing to see that on Facebook and I think extremely insulting comments that, that came as part of it. Facebook begets that. So I would not ever recommend Facebook as being the method. And you would agree, right?
No, it was like recommendations were thrown out like accusations. So, yeah, it was pretty tough.
It was tough. And it's, it's like, what is the real issue here? You couldn't even sort through it to figure out what the real problem was, where this came from, why it came about, why are we doing this? And, you know, seeing that picture of that draw, and, and living through that test, it was awful. And I'm like, oh my God, they're going to do it. I can't believe it, you know? So, because I lived through that and it was, it was not a good situation. I mean, we had to literally come to a stop in order to make that right-hand turn. And, and, you know, if that's what the experts say is the best way to do it after a thorough understanding, then I'll be okay with it. But I just think it was no information, no communication. And Facebook, I would, I would just strongly encourage or recommend not to communicate those types of things on Facebook because it just, it just does and it creates a division in the city that is totally unnecessary.
That was very clear.
We're all trying to be, you know, friends and it's like, oh my God.
It is, it is fascinating, isn't it?
It is.
But, yeah, that would, and it was a very unfortunate, it was part of, you know, last month, we tabled it and we came, you know, Jim and I are talking, it's about a week and a, a week before the meeting. Nobody has said anything. Nobody's gone to any materials. He hasn't heard anything from anybody. So we decided, I, you know, we could have, should have, in hindsight, given a much longer explanation. It was not, last month, we decided it wasn't, wasn't worthy of a town hall and all that. We decided not to do that because of all that's entailed in that. But obviously, Facebook wasn't the answer either, or at least the way it came out.
And I give you credit for trying to get the input. I think, I think that's the right thing to do.
Well, we did get input, right?
Is get the input. You got, you didn't, yeah. I think what we did on our block, which what Bob did, is put a letter out to everyone and just say, hey, weigh in on this. And it was, you know, just emails back. Facebook just is a nasty venue. I mean, I'm on Facebook every day with my family and friends, but when it gets to the city stuff, it's just extremely nasty and I, I don't know why it does, why it's that way, but it just is. And it really was an uncomfortable situation.
I promise I'm not going to.
But communication is good. Don't get me wrong. We're not against communication.
It's nice to see people that I haven't seen in a long time show up on Facebook.
Jody McGuire, Six Woodside. It harkens back to the whole block club. I mean, Bob, I think we're losing maybe an important kernel here. We were talking about block club building and enhancing that communication. And if we ever got a city block club representation and really went street by street, could this be something that's disseminated with block clubs? You get feedback and it's, it's more of like mini town halls, block to block and then broadcast information.
That's a great idea because then people on blocks know who is on the internet, who's not on the internet and how people get their information.
Exactly.
And you can talk.
We know who to take care of.
Just a thought. So it's not an easy fix, but if we were kind of looking at that.
It's a good suggestion though, Jody.
Maybe it's something to enhance and put more energy.
We tried to talk, we talked about more block clubs in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
In connection with the Neighborhood Watch program. And so I think we'll have to start to bring that.
When we do major street projects, it's almost a block club party. Meaning that.
Yeah, it is.
Call meetings together so that people are informed of what we're doing with the streets and the sidewalks and everything. And everyone on the street has an opportunity to weigh in and understand what's happening. In this case, the change wasn't perceived to be big enough to have that, but in hindsight, we now know that, and I think I said in an email, you know, people see their streets, their sidewalks as an extension to their homes in Pleasant Ridge, really. So they have a similar importance, so.
And in a very fun way, there's the block club challenge for the auction.
Yeah.
And, you know, a few blocks really like to put something together, it's going, yeah, I mean, some of you are right up there. So, I mean, maybe it's just something that we should pour some time and energy into and fix the problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jody.
You're welcome.
Any other comments?
Richard. Hi, Richard Burr, 48 Woodward Heights. Just a quick note, I come here speaking in favor of Facebook. I don't mind that you put the question on Facebook. I don't mind that there were rude comments on there. Democracy is messy. I've seen plenty of commission meetings where messy comments were made and people got all upset and that's part of democracy. Figure out the different avenues for sharing information. Let us know about it. Some people are going to choose to be ignorant and not have their voices represented. You do the best you can to reflect that and you have your names on the ballot box. Take care of it. That's it. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
I second that.
Any other comments?
Well, except for we call it ignorance.
Come on, Loretta.
Seriously. I mean, that's extremely insulting.
It is.
Through the chirp. I'm sorry. It's, it's, it's just not, not the right venue for, I really don't believe it is.
Fair enough. Okay. Are there any other comments? Okay. Well, do I have a motion? Nobody wants to make a motion to move forward?
Well, all right. I motion that we do not move forward with item number eight.
All right. Is there support?
No support.
Okay, any discussion? Do you want to say?
Um, I would just like to say, I really appreciate everyone coming out and participating in this way. Mr. Burr, to your comments, well, democracy is messy. I am a full believer in that, but I also believe that with democracy comes some responsibility as far as how we treat each other, how we communicate with each other. And the next agenda item will be, we'll be discussing our goals and objectives as the five elected officials. We have five main bullet points. The one that I always tend to gravitate to, although they're all really good, is foster community trust and participation. And for me, that is constantly a work in progress. Like, we're constantly working on ways to better do that and exemplify that goal. I really believe that the mayor's attempt and Commissioner Scott's attempt to delay the vote a month for citizen input was based exactly on that ideal of community trust and participation. Again, we're up here, that's what we're stated goals. Everyone in the community, you know, you're on your own. I mean, you're individual actors and you will engage with the city and you'll engage with each other based on your own comfort levels. I would hope that the five of us up here, our police department, our city administration can kind of set some example, you know? And I really believe we try to do that. We're human beings. We don't always succeed. But, yeah, I want to find different ways. Loretta has brought up good points, and there's good points about the limits of Facebook. I think Facebook, and not just Facebook, I mean, because we'll see tomorrow after Zuckerberg gets done testifying in Congress what Facebook looks like tomorrow, but.
Just don't start tweeting.
Yes, exactly. Right, yeah, tweeting is the next level.
No tweets here, man.
Midnight, it's summer there.
I just want to assure everybody that that was really what, I took last month's deliberation on this particular issue, and then the subsequent discussion was in that vein to kind of invite participation and foster community trust. So, going forward, I think not only is this a learning lesson on traffic calming measures and what is the smart solutions for our overall objectives citywide, but I think it was always, it was also a learning environment for us to kind of navigate some more of this, how do we get participation? How do we maximize community participation? Because this has been, you know, it's not a frustration. It's just, you want people to participate, you want people to be informed. But like the mayor was saying, you can't just, you know, sit down with everybody. Although, I guess we could knock.
Well, we tried to have the coffees and that did not.
Well, right. So, I just want to assure everyone that we're, we have intentions of increasing participation. How we do that, if you guys help us with that, I think that will help us. So, I appreciate all the feedback tonight. I appreciate the feedback that was garnered online, emails. Although I think technically, we only got one email on this issue.
Two.
Two emails?
At least two.
Two emails?
One did not go to any.
You got one?
Right.
Okay.
So, we got two that were in support.
Mm-hmm.
Of the issue, which, I don't know, are you done?
Am I done?
Keep going, keep going.
No, I mean, those were just my thoughts.
He's done.
Okay.
I will wrap up and say, on the point of this actual improvement, to me, I think Jim has made a fantastic case for the science. For me, it was a point of, are we getting enough of a benefit? And I, in the report that was provided as far as what the one that Jim was speaking, and I hope maybe we can make, can we include that in a packet somehow or somewhere where residents can reference the letter that was received on April 10th from, that you were talking about the results?
Stop sign evaluation?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, could we somehow make that available?
We'll include that as we go forward with this.
Okay.
Broader.
Because that has a good breakdown on why stop signs are not necessarily there.
Right, that's, in the longer run, you know, that's one of the things that we want to try to push out there is, what is the, you know, there's the Michigan manual, Michigan manual on uniform traffic control devices. It's the Bible, like, to put up a street sign, you have to comply with that. So, this evaluation that the engineer did, that we just received for Oakland Park, will be part of what we push out.
Good.
Because it's all part of the bigger story.
Good, because that was very helpful for me. This is just specifically the letter from Patrick Colley.
And I think, yes, from Pat Colley. And I think that's a good point. You know, the stop sign evaluation there is really something that you have to meet the certain things in order to be able to do.
Right.
The whole point of this discussion we're having about the corner bump outs is those truly are a choice, whether we do them or not.
Right.
You know, they're designed with all the engineering standards for turning radius and access and, you know, the test we did was probably, you know, we pushed the envelope a little too far. And then, I think when we designed the test, because we're testing it, it didn't work. Created a bad taste in people's mouths, to be sure. The engineering design on this was going to be fine. But clearly, it's not preferred. And again, that's, this is a choice.
Yeah.
Right, so, yeah.
Well, the letter, the Colley letter, I think really breaks it down. And for me, it's the crash history, right? Three years, there, and from 2015 to 2017, there were three incidences, right? And that's the one that says, during this time period, three crashes occurred in the vicinity of the intersection. Two were rear-end crashes. Third crash involved a failure to yield. So, for me, over three years, for the benefits that we would receive for a project that was going to cost X amount of dollars, to me, the tipping point was that it was, I didn't feel we were going to get as big of a safety bang than I would appreciate. And then also, and this is the month of resident impact, I also believe that residents do have a say in these issues, especially when there's a choice, like we were, like we've established, this wasn't going to substantially increase the safety at this location. So, it was more of, we want to incorporate this as part of an overall plan, which I'm eager to participate. I'm eager to, you know, invite residents to follow along as we develop our policy more generally. But for me, having the residents so weighed against this, to me, was the tipping point to say, you know what, we'll cool our jets on this. We'll develop an overall strategy. We'll invite residents to participate in that. And then we'll see where we can knock off some of these items. So, for me, I'm glad that we were able to incorporate the residents in this discussion. And I'm confident going forward that through Jim's leadership and the data on, you know, how we accomplish some of these things, you know, we'll accomplish these measures long-term, so.
Thank you, Mayor. I think excellent point for me. I think one of the things about Facebook where I totally do believe Facebook is a good forum, I think, you know, the hard thing is, honestly for me, is it makes me develop a thick skin because I have to just like not respond and not react to it. Because it does, people get strangely insulting on Facebook, which, you know, that's why, you know, one of the things the moderators do on the PR/PR pages, they don't allow people on who don't use their real name because it's like, at least you have to own it. And there was one person who wanted to do it and did not own it. And so, then I made him use his real name every time. And he was very, then got silly about it and then realized, it just goes southbound. But it's important, people have to remember, these are your neighbors. It is an important communication tool. I think it, you're right, it can't be the only one. I think, and then we, the bigger discussion we were all having was the quorum issue. And so, it was very frustrating to me because I couldn't present one of the main arguments, which was, and you actually made a good point, Loretta, was that it was so uncomfortable, you had to come to a complete stop. Well, it's like, that's what we want. You know, we want it to be a little bit uncomfortable to make you really slow down.
No, no, sorry. From Ridge Road, turning right, there is no stop sign. You don't have to come to a complete stop. Sorry, the other direction, yeah. I didn't make it clear when I.
No, but that's perfect too, because that's helping slow down Ridge Road traffic. It's like, it's like, when you can take that turn at 30 miles an hour, that's not happy. That's not a good thing.
No, I, no, well, it's like, yeah.
Yeah, so, anyway, so that was my point, that I could not get on there and sort of, and make that point of, you know, don't forget, this is also about, we are really concerned about the speed on Ridge Road. And, you know, whatever ways, you know, if people have to slow down a lot at Oakland Park Boulevard and Elm Park Boulevard and at Poplar Park, in and out and whatever, those are all benefits to the situation. Well, that's why I don't think this is a bad idea. I think, yeah, it's like, if the test was squeezed it too much and left a bad taste in Oakland Park Boulevard mouths, I totally understand. But it's one of those things, it's like, I think it's, it is important that we look, you know, I think the city as a whole, I mean, Amanda heard it a lot when she was campaigning. We all hear it every day, is that, you know, there are, I believe the residents of the cities really do want to reduce the speed on a lot of the streets.
No argument there, no argument.
And it's like, there's no magic pill for that. And I think what we have to do is, when we're talking about traffic calming, you know, in gen, it's like, we have to take these small steps. And something like that, you know, of course, we'd make sure that it isn't, you know, so awkward that you can't make the turn. But we would want it to be something that, you know, we want to have these impacts. And it's hard, you know, the hard thing on Facebook was the quorum issue. And we're not sure. I mean, it was funny, Amanda just went to the MML thing, training, and they brought it up and they said, yeah, you know, discussed it. And they did not have a solid answer.
It was like a zero takeaway.
Yeah.
So.
And it's okay to communicate out, you know, to, you know, whatever's going on in the city, communicate it out. But to ask for stuff coming back in, I think that's where it gets a little dicey.
Yeah, yeah, no.
From an open meetings perspective.
But it's like, and we all know, it's like, we had 260.
We need to stop the crosstalk. Because there's a motion on the table. We're not going to have them anymore. Sorry, but we really should.
Okay. So, so actually, I think I got to all my points. So, basically, I don't think it's a bad idea. Obviously, this is probably not the time for it. So, thank you, though.
Any other discussions before we put, we have a.
Just a real quick question.
Yeah.
Thanks. Yeah, I don't think Facebook is a bad tool to use for feedback. It can't be the only tool. And there are actually ways to use Facebook to get analytics out of it so that we get, you know, true measurement of how people are feeling in addition to the comments that come along with it. So, I would not want to rule out Facebook as a measure of how people feel about things that we do in the city alongside other things. We didn't do that so much on this occasion, so there was a lot of emotion in all the responses. It actually took a lot to read through, as many as I could, to know how people really felt, to know if the feedback was truly wildly negative or if it was just 20 people that were wildly negative overshadowing 40 people that were eh. So, that's, you know, we'll probably use Facebook again in the future, is what I'm thinking, but not in the way that we used it this time. Because it is, it can be a valuable tool in addition to some other tools. And I am going no for this, not because I am against the notion, because I do believe the city has constantly spoken about wanting a walkable, bikeable community. It comes through in all of the other surveys that we've done. And I think this was a measure to help that basic concept of making a nice, easy city to get around for your dogs, for your children. And it's a small thing that we might be able to do that may feel painful at the beginning because it's a change. And we see that with every changes we make that are, that affect everyone in the city. But over time, it just feels natural. And this might have been one of those instances. But in this case, the feedback was overwhelmingly not in favor of the idea just because I think of the way that we handled it. So, we'll do a better job handling it in the future. So, unfortunately, in this case, I think the lowest-cost alternative to do it is while we're doing a road. So, it will be more expensive to do this in the future. We know that we'll have to really give it some thought if we decide to do it. But that's where it fell. So, it's not to rule out the idea, but to say that, well, group of other things that we're going to make the city a nice, walkable, bikeable community.
Okay. Can I, I just want to make a quick comment?
Sure.
This is going to be quick. As Ian mentioned, I, you know, I did just campaign recently and everybody talked to me about, that was the number one thing everybody talked about was safety of their children, people going too fast. That's the number one thing when people see me, they approach me about. So, I am for traffic calming measures. Obviously, again, I'm just, I don't want to beat the horse, it's dead. But I think we could do a better job of communicating this out next time. And I am excited that we're going to be doing, you know, a calming, like, education situation. So, you, so we can educate you and we can all learn together and figure out what's best for everybody to make it so people are excited about these calming measures and realize the good and that there is a positive takeaway for all of us. So, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to not move forward on this. Can we take a vote, please?
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Frizier?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item, 2018 City Commission Goals and Objectives.
This is an annual exercise that we undertake with the city commission to state what our goals and objectives are. The previous issue is an example of something that comes out of the goals and objectives when we do projects. We try to forward these through everything we do in the city. But it's obviously much more than just issues like we just dealt with. And not every project survives the stress test, which is, you know, it's supposed to work. We have reviewed these in a workshop with the city commission and updated the list. These are included in the budget each year. It's an iterative process. So, they don't change much from year to year, but they do change reflective of progress we've made on various issues and things that we've solved and things that we need to solve in the future. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about these.
Well, I just want, I want to say that each year, we prioritize even within all the goals and objectives. And it was wonderful to see a review of last year's priorities and how well city administration responded to all those and how much progress we made. I just want to recognize you and the team for everything that you did. So, it made it a lot easier to get rid of some of those priorities or at least move them down the list and bring up some others that we might have had not been able to push up there before. So, there's a lot of good progress, so.
It's always our roadmap for what we focus on.
Thank you. Are there any comments before we make a motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Real quick. I just wanted to say, for residents, please, this is something that we develop in advance of the budgetary process. And I, and as Jim has stated and the mayor just reiterated, these are like guiding principles. I would please encourage, I would definitely encourage all residents over the course of the year to review these. These are posted on the website under important documents.
They're in two places. Well, actually, they're, look in the budget document.
Yes.
That's where they go.
Right.
So, it's in this agenda packet and then they'll be in the budget.
Okay. But I think this is a great opportunity for our neighbors, our residents, to look over and agree or disagree. Because when issues like the previous agenda item came up, our administration, our electeds are reviewing these and seeing how well our decisions or the agenda items line up with these stated and agreed-to goals and objectives. So, please view these as an opportunity to kind of see where we're coming from and see if they, if you guys agree with them or not. I know one that guided me on this previous one, and this is one that, you know, is under Foster's Community Trust, is this idea about when there's choices of major consequence, you know, we want to collaborate with residents prior to making our decision. So, to me, like I said previously, that was the spirit of my deliberation on the, in the previous agenda item. But I think this is a document that may go unnoticed. And I just wanted to highlight that, that this is a great opportunity for residents to just kind of, you know, do some checking of the job that we're doing, the job City Hall is doing as far as, hey, are you guys meeting your goals and objectives? Are you acting in compliance with what you stated were your collectively, your goals and objectives? So, I really like this document. I fully support the items that are highlighted this year. And look forward to next year, you know, if there's something that develops that we want to amend or change somehow, I would love to have the residents participate in, you know, crafting the goals and objectives that they're comfortable with, so. Thanks, Mayor.
Is there a motion to approve the city commission goals and objectives?
Mayor, I move that the 2018 City of Pleasant Ridge City Commission Goals and Objectives statement be approved.
Is there support?
Support.
Any further discussion? May we take a vote, please?
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Frizier?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, goals and objectives are approved. Next item, City Managers' Report.
Two quick items, and both of them relate to other things that we've heard tonight. The first is the Oakland Park Woodward Intersection. We did do a traffic review of that, I think we presented that at the city commission meeting at some point. We have been working with MDOT to talk about ways of implementing that. The stars may be aligning a little bit, because MDOT next summer, 2019, has a project on the books to redo all the pedestrian crossings along Woodward. So, we're working right now to try to move our concept forward as part of that project, so. No promises, we're at a point where it has to go to, you know, there's certain hurdles when you're in an MDOT process, and one of them is when it has to go to Lansing for signal review.
Signal review?
Yeah, the people you meet with in the room are all very friendly and accommodating, but then it goes to like the, you know, Wizard of Oz behind the curtain.
Right, right. We have no control over that person.
That's when you know, you know, where you're at. So, we've been working to get to that stage in the process, so, you know, don't hold your breath, but I think it's promising at this point. The other thing is, we are working on a new website, this is something that, you know, our circa 2002 website we have.
It's antique.
It is. We're gonna send it to the Smithsonian when we're done with it. But we have been working on a new website, we're gonna be rolling that all out, once we get done working out the bugs, and putting the final fit and finish and polish on it. The thing I'm most excited about the website, is that it's going to allow us to better use Facebook how it should be used, to get public input. The public input shouldn't happen on Facebook, for all the reasons we talked about tonight. Really, the public, Facebook should point people to where the input actually occurs, because for whatever reason, you know, we've talked about a lot of the issues, when we're getting municipal input on city issues, it should be hosted on a city forum. And a new website will allow us to, to much, much better accommodate that, in a, in a good way. And then to use Facebook to make people aware that something's happening, and push you there to have the discussion. So, we are excited about the new website, I cannot, 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 cannot wait to roll it out, because the old one is...
Old.
Cold. Yes. So, yeah, we're working on that, expect new and good things on the website front soon, so.
Good.
That's all I have for tonight.
Okay.
Unless there's any questions you have for me.
Done. All right. Next item, other business. Who's got some other business? I know you've got one.
Okay, really quick. This is it, I'm limiting myself to, only 30 more words, okay. Hotel on the Corner, A Bitter and Sweet, a novel, this is the book club for April. Tomorrow, we're meeting April 11th at the Community Center, 7 o'clock, to discuss Hotel on the Corner, Bitter and Sweet, there, I said it two times, I wasted words there, but this is the May book, Grown Up Anger, The Connected Mysteries of Bob Dylan, Woody Guthrie, and the Calumet Massacre of 1913. This is by Daniel Wolfe, this is at 7 o'clock, Wednesday, May 9th, at the Community Center. Very excited about this one. The author traces the history of the Calumet Massacre of 1913, it was a labor dispute where women and children were killed in the Upper Peninsula during a false fire announcement, there was a stampede, and many lives were taken. The strike breakers were blamed for that massacre, Woody Guthrie was inspired by the tragedy to write a song, and then Bob Dylan, when he was becoming...
It's a funny subject.
When he was, when he was becoming aware politically, he looked to this incident as an influence on him, so, and Bob Dylan influenced a generation. So, very important issue, and one I'm really eager to get into, and...
Thank you.
More than 30 words, I'm sorry.
Good job, Jason.
That's a wrap.
Any, any other business?
You look.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Come on. You said yes?
Yeah, I was making a motion to adjourn.
On the paper?
Uh...
You're adjourned.